Hello, everyone. Donald?
Hello.
Just leave it open and it should be good to go now.
Can everyone hear me and see my screen? Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Watch out, Madam May, you know I'm already grumpy today.
Cheer up, Gordon.
You mean I'm up? I'm almost always up.
I said cheer up.
We'll talk later.
Oh geez.
Mayor, are you okay if I give my virtual meeting disclaimer?
Yes, and can, when you do that, can you just make sure to remind everyone that public comment will be after all of our questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Will do. Hello, everyone. I'd like to address before the mayor requests the roll and starts the meeting. This is a pre-meeting, which is a forum for the city commission to discuss various issues and topics. For much of the meeting, we ask that participants mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions and to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. An opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting today. After the commission discussion and participants will be invited at that time to unmute themselves and address the commission if they wish. We've talked quite a bit the last few meetings about Zoom bombing where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable con- content. If that does occur during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. We have not dealt with that. We hope we don't deal with it tonight. But attendees can reconnect via the same link after we end the meeting if we need to restart the meeting. So if that were to happen, we would, in the meeting, I will also later turn the video over to law enforcement for investigation. And we hope that we don't have to deal with that tonight or any other virtual meeting that we may have. So thank you all for participating. Mayor, I will turn this over to you for the roll call and to start the meeting.
It says Scott on Michael Nyers iPhone. All right. I called the Adrian City Commission pre-meeting session to order. Roll call, please.
There he is.
Present.
Commissioner Halt.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer. Is he not here?
He's not, he's muted.
Oh.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Gaus.
Sure.
Thank you, lad.
All right, thank you, everyone. The first item on tonight's agenda is the Pearl Street lot. I believe that Mr. Rosales, are you with us tonight, Steve? I thought I saw his name.
Thought I did too. I'm going back to look again.
It's on there. It's Steve. There's a Steve.
I think he's muted.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thanks, Steve. You can stay unmuted for this part, obviously. This is, uh, this is your item. I want to give just a little bit of a summary background for the commissioners. Mr. Rosales approached us last fall about an interest in acquiring what is addressed as 211 Pearl Street. It's right across the street from the public parking lot, their own Pearl, behind his establishment. And I know that a couple of the commissioners that are now with us, including the mayor, were not elected at that point. And so I believe everybody's up to speed on their request. We had some initial conversation about it last fall, and then we've been in touch over the course of the last few months. Things obviously quieted down there for a while. We'd like to bring this back up for discussion. And so Steve has an offer in mind that he'd like to make to the commission just to remind everyone that we can't sell land without five commissioners being in favor of it. So we thought that this would bring, we'd bring this back tonight and see where the sense of the commission is moving forward. And so Steve, if you're there, if you want to just give a little recap again on your interest in the lot and what you'd use it for, and anything else you'd like to share with the commissioners?
Well, as we spoke before, Nathan, you know, for additional parking and just to beautify the area, it's been sitting there for 25-plus years, just vacant. You know, city has the upkeep on it as far as the mowing. Usually in the winter, I do all the plowing on it. So we have spots for our employees to park and additional parking for the customers. As you know, I've been in contact with you for several months about it. My last offer was at 12,000. Then you sent me an email a few weeks back, you know, saying, well, if we could come up in the price. Well, then the pandemic hit and things got very tight with us, well, with everybody. Right now, that's probably the best I can do. You know, with the way the economy is going, so that is my thing, is just to beautify that area and for additional parking and get it back on the tax roll.
Yeah, and Steve is correct. We're having conversations about prices. And then things kind of went south here, society-wise, for a while. And so that's kind of where we're at. And so really what the commission should probably discuss is the financial offer as well as anything else related to the lot. You know, we had valued that lot, at least we estimated that the value would be worth a little bit more than that. There's not a lot of comparable sales in the larger area over there to compare it to. But the price has been one issue that we wanted to discuss to see if it's a fair price. And so I would really turn it over to the commission because, for any questions or comments, because that's where we're at right now in the discussion.
Nathan, can you tell us what the cost is on upkeep, like what we're doing over there and about with that? Or Matt might be able to answer that. I don't know if Matt's on the call, but just what exactly the cost is and we're occurring on that right now?
Yeah, I mean, it's difficult to specify the cost to that, that one lot. It's, it's not a huge lot. And what Steve said is correct. We do maintain it. But I couldn't really put an accurate dollar figure. We just don't track it parcel by parcel by parcel. It's something we can try to figure out for you, but I don't have that information available now. And Matt, I don't know if you have a way to estimate that on the fly tonight, but we could certainly try to put a number to it, but it would be a little bit challenging. I don't know if Matt's here.
I thought Matt was. Oh, yeah. Like, like Nathan said, it would be hard to just put a number towards it, but we can definitely look into it.
I mean, it's, it's not an extensive lot.
It's not a large lot at all. Maybe we mow it for an hour a week, maybe, if that. So maybe $30 a week.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
I know the city hasn't molded at all this year. And I'm going to go out there this, probably tomorrow, if not this coming Sunday, and take care of it because it's about knee-high. They mowed the lots on the Church Street side, but not the one on Pearl Street. But you, you know, it's just, and I understand with the pandemic, you know, they're kind of leery about doing stuff, but it's kind of a nice one. And it's been a nice one for the last 25 years. You know, all I'm trying to do is, you know, if I can get my hands on it, beautify it, asphalt it, and put it back on the tax roll.
Can we save it?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I just wanted to follow up and just ask Matt if we can get that scheduled so Steve doesn't have to do anything over there maintenance-wise. Man, is that something we can address this week?
I'm on it now.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
What price do we agree on before the pandemic? I know we were floating some numbers around, like what? I mean, we didn't agree on a price, but like, what was the ballpark and where we at now compared to what, because I can't recall what that number was?
Well, when I, when Steve made the offer of 12,000, you know, I felt like something a little bit higher than that could be, could be better. We talked to the assessing department several times on this, and they, they believe that the lot itself could be worth around 25,000. But, you know, Steve obviously wouldn't, wouldn't agree with that. And so a little bit of a difference of opinion there. But we had never really come to a price where we were working on a purchase agreement. We were in the discussionary phase, and last we talked, 12 was where Steve was. He's explained tonight, just given the economic situation, that's where he is. And so I'm not sure that there's a price higher than that that could be entertained at the moment. But we had never really said, yes, let's go forward with this price. It was something we were in the middle of researching and working out. But I think that's where we're at right now in terms of the offer, 12,000. And, yeah, I think that's what the commission needs to consider tonight, given the information that Steve has shared with us.
I have a question for Steve.
Yes.
Steve, when you say, I understand you want to use it for parking. I totally understand why you would want to do that. But you mentioned twice now beautification. What is, what's on your mind there?
Just, you know, to make it look nice back in there, you know.
Okay, I guess I was thinking maybe you had something in mind other than just asphalt.
Well, just, you know, yeah, that, that's pretty much just it right now at this point in time. With everything going on, things are very tight, you know. I have plans of, you know, doing other things, but, you know, it's time now.
I get that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, one for Steve, one for city staff. Let's start with city staff. How long has this property been vacant, or how long have we been maintaining it?
Matt, I don't know if you know the answer to that. I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look into that. Are you aware, Matt, of that?
Quite honestly, I'm not sure. I know there has been interest in the past for this parcel. Honestly, for that whole block, the city kept it because we, we thought that we were going to gain interest from a an outside source. They were looking to kind of demolish the whole block and build up. That obviously fell through and was just still sitting on it. Before my arrival here, I know there was talk of putting in a complete parking lot in that area as well. But then the talks of the other the other construction started beginning.
Steve, you know that answer, Steve. I know that you own, you obviously own property over there. Do you know how long we've had that? I know it's a question for us.
Yeah. It's when, when George Brown was around. They wanted to build a hotel convention center, but that's when we had all the factories in, in the area and operating. Well, when things, good grief, about 15 years ago, 18 years ago, kind of went south, the factories closed up. That outside company that Matt's talking about folded on the idea. So since then, it's just been sitting there. You know, nothing, nothing's been happening with it. Nobody has interest in it. I've acquired, you know, if there was interest, nobody's showing it. And that's when I jumped on the bandwagon and said, you know, at least let's get it back on the tax roll.
Yeah. The question for Steve, I think when you came to our pre-meeting the first time, you talked about potentially putting a business over there or some kind of structure or, or it almost felt like you were talking about some kind of production facility. Is that still a plan that you're, you're going to run with? And if so, do you have a horizon to go along with that, or am I remembering things wrong?
No, no, no. You're very, very correct, Brad. I was going to put a tortilla factory there.
Yeah.
But with the cost and now with this going on, you know, that is very much on hold. But, you know, it's not out of my dreams, though. You know, it's still, it got pushed back a little ways.
Okay. And so I guess, I guess where I'm going with that, and you continue, or you, you have multiple times made the statement about putting it on the tax rolls. And I, and I really like that idea. You, what, I mean, can we say? And I open this up to whether it's Tamaris or Administrator Bird or, or Steve or anybody. You know, is it reasonable to put a, some kind of limits on the purchase where if, you know, if a facility of that nature, a production facility of that nature, isn't built in, say, five years or something like that, where it's a contingency that all of a sudden that becomes more of a market rate purchase that we set today? And I mean, and we can sell it to them for half off, but I don't, I don't know how that would work or if it's legal to do that even. So I guess that's it. I mean, if Steve's got a dream of putting something on there, I think Steve's dream is more likely than a hotel convention center. And so how can we support him in this dream while looking out for the interests of the city?
We can build conditions into the purchase agreement so that those are noted there. We also could put deed restrictions on the land if we needed to do something like that. But I think that building the conditions into the purchase agreement may be an easier route to go. But it's definitely something that we can work out with Mr. Rosales.
Because I think, you know, I, I checked with Administrator Bird this afternoon as to what the, the tax value would or about an estimate ballpark was $800 a year. So, yeah, because I was trying to figure out how quickly we would be ahead if we were to sell this at a discount. And, yeah, a parking lot's $800. But if he were to put a commercial building in there, it goes pretty quick. And I think it's something that we should really consider. And if we can come to some kind of agreement with, with Steve, you know, I, I think we, we pursue it because, you know, I mean, Steve's a staple in that neighborhood. And we can, we can wait and speculate as to something's going to go up there. But, but in the same right, we can also support somebody who's already invested and, and somebody who's already, yeah, a staple in downtown Edger. Just my thought.
May I say something? With that being said, when the old Tecumseh fence was sold there on the corner of, excuse me, College and Church Street, they were under the same stipulations as, as we're discussing right now as far as, you know, deed restrictions and stuff. But yet nothing has happened or nobody has forced them to do anything with that building. But yet they maintain a service garage after hours in there.
Good point, Steve, that when we have deed restrictions, I mean, someone has to remember them and pay attention to them. So I'm not sure that I would be in favor of a deed restriction. If you build in that area, if you decide to build, we're going to get more tax dollars because of the new buildings and all of the fees and all of the taxes anyway. And, and like this, no one's, we can't foresee the future. Who knows how long this pandemic really is going to last or second wave, all that crap. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't really, I don't like it just sitting empty. I like the idea that you want to pay taxes on it and create a nicer parking spot for, for us to come and enjoy your business. Is, you know, is half off doable? Who, I don't know how, you know, that $25,000, when was the? Nathan, you said that you, you had them look into that recently, but when was that $25,000 value actually placed on it? Was that 10, 15 years ago? Is that a current value?
It was estimated to be worth that early by the assessor's office. But like I said, it, you know, it really depends on what you're comfortable selling it for. But that's the number that has come up both last fall and as recently as this weekend, and we had some conversations about it. But certainly there'd be a disagreement around that figure, but that's the figure that we've kind of been having in our mind throughout this entire process. And, yeah, definitely it's up for discussion, however the commission wants to proceed. We could, we could work on some possibilities of what some conditions could look like in a purchase agreement. If you wanted to sell it for 12 now, we could work on those with Steve over the next couple of weeks prior to the next get, get together. If there's a desire to at least have that conversation, we could do that now and then get back to you on what that might look like. And if there's not, if there's this consensus to move forward with the offer as it stands, that's fine too. I don't want to, you know, want you to think I'm recommending or not recommending anything. I just want to be clear that, you know, we would have initially thought that that lot would have been worth more. But the world's a very unusual place right now, so we know that.
Nathan, if there's a condition agreement on that, like, whose responsibility is that to keep track of that?
Well, it would be, it will be on both the buyer and the seller. We would have to monitor that. And so if we put something where we were expecting a commercial business to be there in five years, we would have to notate that and make sure that the relevant departments are aware of it. And we would also check in with the seller periodically. That's not that unusual. You remember last year, we sold a lot of vacant.
We were pointing somewhere else.
We sold a lot of vacant land over in the industrial park. And there was a start date for construction listed in that as a condition of, of that sale. And so it's not something that's unusual for us to have those agreements. You do have to be attentive to them, and we would obviously have to commit to doing that, but that, that's not unusual to do that.
I'd like to see some conditions worked into some kind of purchase agreement for, for our review or for consideration. And, you know, I, I think that, I think that's reasonable, especially in a timeline right now.
I guess what I'm at with it is that, you know, first of all, I appreciate Nathan trying to get, you know, the most we can out of our property, you know, that the city owns. With that being said, I think that, you know, we, I think that's the property that they were looking at a couple of pilot projects, which again, you know, we don't get tax, even if most projects, we get, you know, percentage of rents, occupied rents, actually. So I guess my position is this, I mean, I love selling city property. I do. And anytime we can get more than a dollar for it, you know, you know, I'm, I'm in support of. I think that, you know, getting it back on the tax, I just did the math, $800 in taxes a year, you're looking at, you know, 15, 20 years, I'm guessing, you know, you know, recruit the market rate. But I don't like to hold property thinking there's some pie in the sky project that's may or may not be coming down the road. So anytime we can sell property, you know, even at a discounted rate, I mean, he's going to maintain it. He maintains his business very well. I think it's something we have to look at. But again, I like, you know, Commissioner Watson's comment about, you know, about putting some contingencies in there. I mean, I would, I wouldn't have a problem looking at that either, but I love selling property and getting it back in tax rolls. Because that, every piece of property the city owns has lost revenue. We're, you know, the city's getting, going in general funds, so. I guess I'd rather see a parking lot there than, than, and get 12,000 a day than seeing a pilot project there that we're getting six or 10% of occupied rents long-term. That's just my opinion, though.
Let me say that Commissioner Halt is correct. There's been two pilot projects who have looked at that property. Neither one of them ever amounted to anything. I would rather see a local businessman like Mr. Rosales get the property who's been in the neighborhood for I don't know how many years, but a long time. And the other projects just didn't work out, and he's ready to pull the trigger and do it, and I think we should work with him. I do like the idea of the contingency. And so I think we need to, we need to move forward.
But with that, I appreciate Commissioner Burr trying to, even, even when he's leaving, he's not from here, he's still trying to get the best dollar we can get for the city, which I appreciate that effort also.
And, and my, my, my only point is, is that, you know, if, if there's a commercial building there, there'll be far more tax dollars. So it, I mean, if, for example, in five years, Steve has been unable to make progress on, on one of his dreams, then it's a, you know, then all this, then he owes us a payment of $4,000 or, or $5,000 or $6,000, some number out there just that makes us whole at that point in time and, and, or closer to whole, or just additional consideration related to it.
I guess I'll put my two cents in. I agree with what Commissioner Halt said about selling city property, getting, you know, back on the tax rolls. I talked to the administrator this morning and asked specifically about the, the assessment, what the, what the assessor had to say. And he told me about the $20,000, $25,000. In reality, I think a piece of property is worth what somebody is willing to pay for. And Mr. Rosales is willing to pay us $12,000. And that plus the contingencies we've been talking about is something that I can live with.
Well, if, if everyone's okay with this course of action, why don't Steve and I, we can get together by phone or virtually sometime this week and see if we can come up with any conditions that would be agreeable for you. If not, we can, we can write up a purchase agreement based on the offer that you've given us and present it back to the commission as is. But if that's okay, Steve, maybe we can have a conversation in a day or two, come up with some ideas that might be agreeable to the group. But if not, the fallback plan would be to present a purchase agreement to the commission as you've described it. And we'll just sort of see how the chips fall at that point.
That's fine. No, we, give me a call when it's convenient for you, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be yet this week for sure, because I think we'd like to get this resolved, hopefully at the first meeting in July, if at all possible.
That, that's fine. That'd be great. That'd be great.
Is that all right, teachers, to proceed that way?
Yes.
Yes.
Fine with me.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right. Unless there's further discussion, we can move on to the next item, and that is a discussion of urban chickens. Mayor, I think I'm going to hand this over to you. I know you've had some conversations with residents who are interested in this topic. And this is our first, at least in recent times, this is, would be our first conversation about it. So Mayor, did you want to kick things off for this topic?
Um, there's just a growing interest in
Um, there's just a growing interest in the city. Um, some residents have formed a group and, um, as you probably saw, they were on the front of the, um, Daily Telegram of maybe like a week, maybe two weeks ago. And they are very passionate about having chickens. Um, and I think what sort of sparked it is Ann Arbor had just recently passed an ordinance where you no longer have to have neighbor permission and they used to have to have that. Um, and there's just a growing number of larger cities and some smaller cities that are, are starting to pass this. So I think that there's been, um, it's sparked a new interest in our area. So I wanted to, um, I, you know, I, I, some came forward and asked if we could have a discussion about this. And, um, I've, obviously I'm hearing both sides of it. Um, and I, as I'm sure everyone else is, but, um, you know, I know that some of the things that have been said is, you know, almost everybody has a limit, no roosters. Those are things that the, the people that are asking for the chickens are, are saying, no roosters. There would be a limit of, you know, maybe four, um, some things like that. There would be some, you know, contingencies on that. But I would also like to discuss, Nathan, just what this entails for us on the city side. I know that, um, in speaking with commissioners, one-on-one and even speaking with you, you know, we're gonna have to enforce this. What is our code enforcement situation right now? I would like to also discuss that within this discussion because I know that is a concern of many.
Well, it's, uh, thank you, Mayor. It's actually a great point. Um, I had a little bit of communication with our code enforcement officer today. And I'm looking over at my other screen, uh, to reference an email he sent me. And, um, what his request was that if something like this were adopted and approved, he would ask that the ordinance is specific on the number allowable, uh, location on the property and how upkeep would occur. It would require a zoning ordinance change as they are currently prohibited. And so, um, I think that would be something that we'd have to obviously be specific about. It would be an additional item of code enforcement made, uh, you know, review. I, I don't weigh in one way or another on this, other, other than to say that our code enforcement staff is a little bit stretched thin as is. A- as you know, we were possibly going to add another code enforcement officer until COVID hit. And so we've temporarily, uh, put a pause button on that. And so we are, um, you know, very busy in code enforcement. But, uh, our code enforcement officer today expressed a willingness to do what would need to be done. But he would ask for some specific provisions so that he would know exactly what he's looking for, uh, when he's out, uh, you know, researching this. But a lot of different cities have had this conversation. Um, cities I previously worked have had this conversation. And, um, it's something that always seems to come around. So, uh, those residents who are interested in it were certainly interested in hearing their ideas for, uh, numbers allowable, size, location on a lot, different things like that. Um, certainly it's all up for discussion.
Uh, Commissioner Roberts, can you weigh in a little bit on this conversation? Um, because I do know that you have experience with chickens.
Well, that's a loaded question, but yes. So I, I grew up on a farm. I still have a farm. I mean, my parents, my 93-year-old father has chickens still. And I'll be going home to see them on Saturday. And so I've, I've literally had chickens my entire life in my family. And I have several brothers who own chickens, but they all live outside of Gaylord. They all live outside, they all live on farms or outside of the city limits. So I don't have any experience with urban chickens, but I do have lots of experience with chickens. So they can be smelly. They're extremely messy. If we don't allow roosters, are they reasonably quiet? Sure. Yeah. Yeah, they're okay. You, you don't get a ton of eggs and there's always not a laying season and you have to work that carefully. Usually it's one egg a day and that's if they're in the mood to lay an egg. Once in a while there are two. And they can be considered pets. I mean, I grew up where we would butcher them and that's what we fed the 10 kids on. But, um, now my father keeps them as pets. And so they, they do come and sit on his lap and he calls them by name and, um, it's adorable. However, we've had times where they draw pests. We've had to eradicate rats from our farm. There's chicken hawks. We've actually had coyotes. So there's all kinds of other things, the raccoons that come and try and either eat the chickens or their chicken eggs. So, I mean, there, it, I, I'm, I'm not one side or the other. I'm completely right down the middle on this issue at the moment. A- as I said, I, I've had chickens my entire life in my family. I mean, not at my house in Adrian, but to me, in my family. Um, and there's a lot to it. It, you know, if you have more than a couple, there's a lot of, of upkeep. And I, I guess for me, the biggest worry wouldn't be the smell or the sound or any of that. It would be about bringing in, um, other critters that don't belong in the city. That, to me, that would be the biggest worry. If coyotes run our streets to get to those chickens down on Broad Street or someplace, that's gonna be a problem.
Nathan, are we allowed to bring, uh, someone into the mix like we did Steve just now? The, the, one of the persons that did approach me about chickens, cause I see they're on the line.
Yeah, if the commission's agreeable to opening it up to public comment for this topic, that's certainly up to the commission. So yeah, that's doable.
And we still have some more discussion and then open it up to public comment.
That's fine.
Please.
Yes, that's fine.
Mayor Heath, if I could interject just for one moment to give you guys some additional information for your discussion.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that, um, right before COVID, we had put together the, odor advisory panel, and we're currently working on a air pollution ordinance for the city. And it will affect several industries in the city. Um, but as Commissioner Roberts pointed out, that there could be odor caused by this. And just if it's something that the commission moves forward with, I think people in the community need to know that there could be some enforcement on, um, air pollution ordinances if they're not having proper upkeep, because that will likely be coming before you guys next month, just as we're coming back into regular meetings. So I just wanted to put that reminder out there. Thank you.
I have a question. Everybody, even if they're pro or con, have mentioned no roosters. I get that. And, uh, but my question is, I've, I've been told that you go to someplace like Tractor Supply and you can buy two, four or six little chicks. It might sound crazy, but when you buy these little chicks, and I've seen them before, how do you know that you're not getting a rooster in there? And so if somebody goes and buys six chicks and one of them turns out to be a rooster, so then what? But I mean, I don't think you can pick those chicks up and flip them over.
Commissioner Strayer, this isn't an anatomy lesson, buddy.
You know what? There's been a lot of passionate talk here and everything is there, uh, there's no science being talked about. It's all, you know, just how we feel about chickens or how we feel about our yard. But this is something that if somebody accidentally gets a rooster, you know?
It, in that, in that could happen, but oh, with my, you know, just a few years of, uh, purchasing chickens for my family at, you know, from the Gaylord Farm and Fleet. They, they come in different crates. You order them. They actually used to come through the mail. They, you know, would go and pick them up at the post office. It's crazy. And you order them specifically either male or female, roosters or not roosters. So unless there was some crazy mix-up, I, I honestly can't remember that ever happening in my house. I, I just don't. But I understand the question, but if you go to, if you go to, to Farm and Fleet or whatever it's called here, there'll be big bins and you can pick either laying chickens or, uh, laying egg chickens or roosters. And you, you have to pick out which ones you want out of each bin. They're not mixed.
I think, uh, Commissioner Strayer and I had the opportunity to visit with a family outside the city limits, um, who, who had four chickens, um, this weekend. And it, it was a very educational experience for myself. And I think Commissioner Strayer would agree. We learned, uh, a lot about chickens in about a half an hour. Um, I, I, boy, um, you know, the four that they had were, uh, they had a, a, a nice coop. At the time, it was not like, they didn't know we were coming. We had an open invitation, so we popped out there. So it's not like it was all freshened up and with cedar chips and made it look like all, like their coop belonged in Pottery Barn versus instead of the backyard. I mean, it was, I mean, it was in its natural state, it, it seemed like. Um, you know, I put my head right in the coop, cause there was a, a hen in there. She was either laying or preparing to lay. Um, and, and, you know, it, it wasn't, i- i- yes, there's an odor to it. But I have been, you know, I've walked near houses that have stronger odors from a cat problem. Um, so I, I think that we need to, you know, there's responsibilities for this and, and we can go count the number of chickens. Somebody's cats, I mean, they can have a whole herd of them or a whole pack of cats and, and we have no control over it. So I, I think this discussion really needs to, to progress. We need to get educated on it. You know, I think there's, there's differences in breeds, um, of chickens that some may have different tendencies than others in terms of noise and in terms of, um, you know, uh, anything else that people are concerned with as well as, you know, I learned that there's a difference between an egg layer and a meat chicken. So, I mean, is, is that a difference that we need to take into consideration in, in how we, we write this ordinance? And, and, um, you know, there's aggressive chickens and there's passive chickens. And there's, you know, I mean, there's a lot to learn before we can make a decision about this. But I do, I did have an extremely positive experience for about, uh, 45 minutes of standing right next to a chicken coop, talking about chickens. And I could be having a barbecue right next to that chicken coop and it wouldn't bother me. Like, it wouldn't be a nuisance to me on that day. Again, uh, if you remember back, Sunday was a pretty nice day. There's a good breeze going. It wasn't 95 degrees, so on and so on. There's all kinds of asterisks that we can put by it, but there's, there's a worthy discussion to be had. Um, and, and Commissioner Strayer and I talked on the way back. You know, it, it, it might be beneficial for us to have another pre-meeting, uh, in person that people can come in and explain their positions better, explain the pros, explain the cons. I've had one experience and I'm not gonna draw my conclusion off of one experience. There's some smart people out there that can tell us, um, you know, why this is good, why this is bad, why we should be considerate. Yeah, I mean, the, you have a coyote running down the street, that, that's a bad thing. Um, but the, they also, you know, this is also, um, there's, there's other buyer beware's or not buyer viewers, but buyer responsibilities where if you're gonna put up a chicken coop, there's rules behind it and, and it's for everybody's good.
I'm pretty sure MSU Extension, um, also offers tips and guidelines. So I was looking that up and just saying, they have, uh, suggestions for ordinances allowing backyard poultry. So, I mean, there are resources out there that we can look at. Um, and obviously we're not the only city who's been dealing with this because there's a lot that have, um, have, have gone to doing this. But they're, you know, what they have out there on the extension website looks pretty basic. But at least it's a guideline for what we, what we should have and.
Right. And I think there's, there's a matter.
Yeah, it's, it's enforcement. It, it really will come, I think, come down to the enforcement. Do they have adequate pens that are safe and not going to be, um, you know, accessible to raccoons and other things that want to come and eat them?
Well, a- as well as yard size. I mean, s- some people's yards might not be big enough to accommodate chickens. I mean, there's a lot to consider.
I agree 100% um, Commissioner Watson, and I know Commissioner Strayer and I also talked. I, I do not think this is going to be one pre-meeting discussion. I, I think it's going to take several discussions and the, what I really agree on is that I think in person will just be a, a better discussion. I'm not saying, it'll be different, maybe not better. But it, it would be better to hear, you know, to actually have people that are passionate about chickens. And maybe there's going to be people that are very passionate against chickens, but so that we can get that, that full flavor of where everybody's coming from and what their thoughts are, you know, in person, because it's a little more difficult to do via Zoom. But, um, I, I think it's definitely going to take several discussions. I don't even think another pre-meeting discussion might even get it all out. I, I think it's gonna take a lot of research and just a lot of discussion.
Why is it, why is it that, and Nathan's ignorant, but from what, you know, I remember back when we were hiring Nathan and hiring a new city attorney and, and, and I, I, I made a joke to Commissioner, or former Mayor Jacobs. I said, "Look at our problems and Tecumseh's fighting about this and it's contentious." And then Nathan last week told us that this former city, um, the mayor and Commissioner Goss and I, like the, the former city left Brownsville, like it was, they, they tried to get it passed twice and it was so contentious. So I will not have chickens if we allow it. I mean, I just, I'm not a chicken, obviously. I don't, if Doug Katnick had a chicken coop, I wouldn't care. I just, I don't know why it's such a big issue. And, and so I'm, I'm listening to all you, you know, you know, the rest of you guys, I'm educating, cause I'm just, maybe Nathan can shed some light on what, I mean, I don't know why it'd be an issue necessarily. You know, you know, the enforcement part I get, but other than that, I mean, I don't, I, I don't get why this is always, you know, multiple cities, you know, it's such a contentious issue.
Uh, yeah, just to, just to answer a little bit of that, it was actually, uh, two jobs ago, the city I worked for in Ohio, um, they had discussions on this that went back to, uh, 2010, 2011. And I do, I do think, and I want to verify this, that they have adopted an ordinance, uh, just, just maybe last year, 2019. But it's just a, it's an issue that generates a lot of passion, um, among people. And, uh, everywhere it's been discussed, I think there's been a lot of pros and cons and yays and nays associated with it. And so, um, I would imagine that would be the experience here as well. Um, I do think that the recent pandemic has probably heightened some interest in this sort of activity. And so that might be something that gets even more people involved in the discussion, the ability to, you know, create their own food on their own property. But, uh, yeah, it took, uh, about seven or eight years worth of discussion, one of the cities that I've worked for, um, before they actually got to a consensus on what to do. So, uh, yeah, definitely a, a hot topic whenever it's brought up.
I think to, to Commissioner Health's famous quote that he always says is, uh, you know, it's a quality of life thing. And, and it's, it's a, you know, some people are gonna be like, man, farm fresh eggs from our backyard is awesome. And the other people are gonna be like, this is gonna ruin the quality of my backyard because my neighbors got chickens. And, and that's, that's the, that's the whole balance. And, and I don't know enough, especially to the negative, as to, to why this would be a bad.
Let me say that two of the, two of the people that I talked to who were against backyard chickens were people that grew up in the country and they said, "I don't, I don't want to bring the country into the city." And one of their arguments was that chickens smell. Okay? So I guess I would reach out to, um, the rest of you, uh, to Commissioner Roberts and say, okay, you grew up on a farm and you probably had a lot of chickens. Are four chickens or six chickens, if they're maintained well, are they gonna smell? Because the, the pro people that I've talked to have said, "There's no smell at all." Um, and one of the people who I talked to said, you know, "This is something that he was interested in doing because of the pandemic." And, you know, how, if we have a round two or a round three, you know, how will the food chain be disrupted in the future? So he's looking at it from a practical standpoint. But you know what, um, Commissioner Watson and I saw the other day was four chickens that, like he was saying, we, we could add a barbecue right next to them. There wasn't a smell. So Commissioner Roberts, if you grew up with a lot of chickens, how do you feel about that?
I did. We generally had 50 to 100 chickens at a time and we raised them from chicks to full grown. And so that, of course, that amount of chickens is going to have quite the smell. Now, if you have five, 10 chickens, this are going to be some odor minimal, minimal odor. If you take care of them, again, it's going to go back to the upkeep. What are you going to do? Every, I mean, you have to clean, they're poop, they poop a lot. They're like geese. They poop a lot. What are you going to do with that? Where are you going to dispose of it? Um, is it going to be allowed in our, you know, in the garbage or is it going to be considered compost? And they're gonna send it out to, um, Oakwood. So we'll have to think of things like that. But, uh, if we had an ordinance saying they could have four chickens, I, I can't imagine that that would bother anyone with a smell. I just can't.
Now, the, the upkeep is a thing. My brother, uh, was in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania and they, they are allowed. I don't. I don't remember if they're allowed six or four, but he's looking at getting two more. He has two right now. But he'll even tell you, if he didn't have his teenage daughter taking care of them, they probably wouldn't even have them because it, it's a lot of upkeep. And there's also another side to all of this that they go into henopause at one point. And now he's probably going to get two more because they're not even getting any eggs. And that was their whole reasoning behind that because they eat very organically and natural. And, um, they grow a lot in their garden and everything, but now he's got to get two more that they're going to have to keep up with. And he said, that's going to be a lot more work, but it's because their hens are in henopause and they're trying to promote them to give them more eggs. So, you know, there is that side of that too. And, you know, the people need, that we all need to realize that they're not always going to be producing and they go through that, you know, and they're, I don't know. That's just something I know just from personal experience from my brother.
But that's their, that's the risk they take of buying chickens for the backyard. I mean, that's something that we can write in our ordinance. I mean, and, and, and to the point of, of maintenance and things. You know, somebody could have five or six dogs and if they don't take care of their backyard and clean up after them, that's an issue that we have to deal with. Five or six chickens could be the same way. I, I don't know, but, but people are accountable for their property and this wouldn't be any different.
Right?
I just have to ask, is everyone else having that static feedback?
No.
Is it just?
No.
Okay.
So I've got a couple of comments. Never being at a loss for words. I read, well, I printed off a, a article off for the internet this weekend. And I know you can't always believe internet, but this was written, an article written by a woman who owns chickens and likes her chickens. But it also covered the pros and cons of raising a chicken or chickens. Um, and the, almost the top three were smelly drip or droppings, noise and rodents. And, you know, rodents just don't appear on your property. They got to go through, you know, either come in from the woods, if you're backed up to the woods or come across somebody else's property. So I'm not, you know, I'll just throw that out because we've all heard about the fox and the chicken coop and, you know, how that turns out. Um, I get back to my concern and, and it was already mentioned about code enforcement. And with all due deference to, uh, Glenn, I think he's still on the call. His workload is amazingly large between rental inspections and, you know, uh, citizen complaints about, you know, too tall grass and everything else. I just question as to whether he's got the time to respond, eh, respond to, um, you know, any of these complaints. Uh, and I think I've looked at somebody else's or another city's ordinance and they talk about inspections of the coops before they can be occupied. I don't know whether that's Glenn or that's Tony doing the building inspection. I don't know if they're considered buildings or not. But I just think at this point in time, well, we've got to freeze on hiring and we've got, um, so much workload that I'm not anxious to just move forward blindly. I agree with the mayor. We need to have one or more pre-meeting discussions about this because, you know, once we go down this road, there's no turning back. And, you know, I, I, I just think we need to consider that and, and understand that. And write an ordinance that covers as many of the issues that we can think of, you know, if they're coming up. And so I'll just offer that out to you.
Nathan, what time do you feel we need to start the budget update discussion? Cause I'm asking to know if we can, I know there's a few, uh, people on the line that might want to weigh in on this, but I didn't know about our time limit.
I, I would probably need less than ten minutes to go through that update. It's, there's some important information, but it's not necessarily a ton of information. So as long as I had, you know, eight, nine, ten minutes, I'd probably be okay. And then I also don't believe that the charter amendment, uh, Temeris is going to speak on that. I think that's fairly brief as well. So we certainly want to make sure that people have a chance to, to be heard if they're here tonight.
Is the commission in agreement with, um, listening to some people now? I know there's a public comment at the end, but, um, are we okay with doing it or do we still want to be discussing this? Or do you just want to wait and have them weigh in at public comment after budget update? What do you want to do?
They can talk. I, I'm, I'm educating myself, listening to Commissioner Roberts and, you know, and, and, and then some of you that's, you know, mayor, you know, your brother. I'm just listening right now. I'm taking it all in. So I, I, I'd like to hear their insight, to be honest.
Yeah, open it up.
Okay. I know there's some of you on here because I recognize some of the names. So if you want to talk about the chickens, please.
I'd like to speak if you don't mind. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, uh, Eric Kennedy, thirteen thirty-eight West Mall B. Um, I have personal experience with chickens and owning a business across the street from residential chickens. And, and the impact, uh, is quite frankly embarrassing. So to allow chickens within the city limits is, um, quite frankly trashy. So there's three things that really kind of affects. First and foremost, it does not align with the city of Adrian's, uh, plan for progress, which would include enhanced landscaping, signage and so on and so forth. Number two is the enforcement. God bless Glenn. He's overworked. Uh, and there is no way if he can't keep up with, uh, rental enforcement and light, that he could keep up with chicken coops. And number three is the quality of life. There's no way that anyone wants to live next to a chicken coop. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'd like to talk if, uh, there's a chance to.
Go ahead.
Uh, Bob Banky, two fifty-six Ironwood Drive. I'm, uh, the last house in the city. So, um, when you talk about, uh, talk about odors and, uh, that sort of thing, the smell that I get from, um, blowing in from the neighbor's yard and, uh, the manure that's coming across, uh, um, is something that's, uh, I'm relatively used to on a, on a daily basis during this time of, uh, year. And the, uh, the rodents in my yard, uh, chipmunks and feral cats and, uh, mice and, uh, um, coons that get into my, uh, gardens and so forth, um, they're already doing a good job of, uh, eat my corn, um, without chickens. I've, uh, I've raised, uh, rabbits in Adrian for meat. Um, I did that for a number of years and, uh, was successful and, uh, never received a citation from, uh, the code enforcement officer. So I guess I've done, uh, a good job of, uh, doing that and culling the herd when, uh, when, uh, um, the meat production was, uh, taking place on that front. So, um, you know, when it comes to, uh, when it comes to chickens, uh, don't have experience. Um, I do know, uh, people that, uh, live near me and people in the city that, uh, do have chickens already. Um, and they've, uh, had very successful experiences with, uh, chickens in, uh, in the city. Um, you know, I think that, uh, in terms of, uh, food and the opportunities for growing our own food, um, is first and foremost in my mind. And I think of, uh, those locations. I think, uh, Commissioner, uh, Watson talked about the size of, uh, the lot and so forth. I'm, uh, I'm in the rural part of the city. Um, like I said, the last house in the city. And, uh, definitely a much larger lot that, uh, would be conducive to, you know, in my case, multiple gardens and, um, the ability to, to raise animals. So, um, that's my area of support for that.
I'm not hearing any more right now or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I'm Chris Williams. I'm the one that was in the paper. Um, I'm under Sarah Williams, my wife's name here. Um, I have had chickens in the past. I've always lived in the country. I now live in town. When I lived in the country, I had four chickens and unfortunately a rooster, he, he disappeared. The chickens themselves, they provided food for us every single day with fresh eggs. And when they did stop producing eggs, they would then go into our freezer. So they were still providing food for our family, just in another form. And now that I'm in town, I would still like to be able to provide that food for my family. I, I garden quite a bit. I have two large gardens with vegetables around my house. I'm actually using them as landscaping. But I, even though I live in town, I, I think that I should, you know, I would like to still be able to provide food for my family in the form of chickens. You know, I'm not looking to have goats. I'm not looking to have cows, pigs, just, you know, three to six hens. I, I have more of an issue with my neighbor's cats going in my garden, going all over the neighborhood. And there's no ordinance on those, on the cats, even though they're running the neighborhood and they're creating a health issue because I go to pick my vegetables and their feces are in my garden. I'm not opposed to having some type of a permit or a license for the chickens, just like I have a license for my dog living in town. I, I, and I think that might kind of help weed out some of the people that would be less responsible. I'm all for having a certain sized yard, maybe quarter acre or larger. There are some very small lots in town and even though I'm all for chickens, I'm not so sure that some of the really small lots should have them. So, you know, maybe it wouldn't be for every resident. But I think that's pretty much what I have to say, but I, I'm just looking at, I don't want a pet. I mean, I don't want another mouth to feed. I'm looking at the chickens from the standpoint of providing food for my family. It's just another extension of gardening.
May I speak?
Yes.
My name is Scott Holt. I'm at three thirty-six Ferguson Avenue. I am two blocks from downtown. I also have a lot of the same concerns that have been echoed, especially with code enforcement. Um, but I would like to see something being added on about owner occupied. Um, I live in a highly rented district and I have seen the bad of people with animals. Um, I would really like to see owner occupied if we go down this road.
Very good point. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm not hearing anymore. So I, um, I would like to, I guess, how, how do you feel commissioners about maybe the first in-person meeting? Cause we don't know when that will be, the first in-person pre-meeting that we could have this discussion again? What are your thoughts on that?
I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Cause I just think it's very difficult to have this discussion via Zoom. Um, it just makes it a little bit more difficult and some people may not be on here, um, for that reason. And maybe they would weigh in and be at the, the pre-meeting. So can we, uh, so can, uh, let's go ahead then and plan that we will put that on, Nathan? Does that work to put that on, um, in the future, when we're going to have an in-person meeting?
It does. And we don't know exactly what's going to happen with the executive order on virtual meetings. Right now it goes through June. This is our last June meeting. And so we'll have to see if we are able to meet in person on July sixth or not. Um, if so, we can plan on that. I, we do have a, a fairly lengthy pre-meeting agenda planned out already for that. But I think we can, we can probably work some things around, um, to accommodate that and that'll be our goal.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Nathan, if you want to go on to the budget update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to read a lot of numbers. I know reading numbers and listening to numbers isn't the greatest thing. And so I'll follow this up with a written communication to you. But we thought that this would be a good night to give an update on where we're at with our budget. Um, you'll recall that when we passed the budget on May fourth, we had stressed up to that point that there were a lot of unknowns uh, in different revenue sources that, um, just weren't going to come into focus, uh, quite, quite at that time. And so we are now starting to get in some revenue estimates for our state provided revenue. And most of it's pretty good news. Um, and so I wanted to touch on three topics tonight related to the budget. Um, the first is transportation funding. Um, a- as you all know, we put about two million dollars worth of road projects in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. And as we worked on that budget, we stressed that we would only do that work if the transportation funding, uh, materialized. And so prior to COVID nineteen, the state had estimated for us that we should receive two million four hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and four dollars in transportation funding for our next fiscal, fiscal year. And so obviously if you plan for two million dollars and you receive almost two point five million dollars, those numbers match up pretty well. Our concern during the shutdown was that those numbers may not, uh, materialize. And so the state has now actually given us two updated revenue, uh, projections, uh, the most recent being on June second. And that newest estimate is that they are telling us that we should plan around two million three hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars in transportation funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, so this is only a reduction of ninety-five thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars from the original predict, projection. So it's about four percent down. Um, this is really good news. Uh, we also want to keep in mind that this is an estimate. Um, but if that amount materializes, we should be able to safely and confidently be able to complete, uh, most of what we were planning to do, uh, over the next fiscal year. So, uh, this is good news on transportation funding. Uh, the state has been very, uh, careful on how they're putting these estimates together. They've had several webinars with us on what they're doing and, uh, they're obviously taking this extremely seriously, given our environment right now. Another good thing about transportation funding is that we receive payments monthly. And so we don't have to wait real long to find out if these are materializing as expected. And so we're going to be watching this come July and August as the fiscal year gets started, uh, to make sure that we're collecting what we are planning to collect. Uh, but for this portion of state funding, the both estimates they've given us since COVID hit, uh, have been pretty positive. And so I'll stop there before I move on to the next topic, but does anybody have any questions or comments about that funding source?
Uh, yeah, I do. Um, though, just, just to be crystal clear, um, those are very restricted funds. Can't be used for anything like salaries or anything like pension deficits or, or, or dog parks, things like that. That's just for roads and streets, right?
Thank you for pointing that out. I always want to reference what's general fund and what's not, and this is not. And so this can only be used for transport, transportation related expenditures. And so of that two point four million dollars, we cannot take a portion of it and put it somewhere else. It can only be used for, for these functions. That's a legal matter. Um, we don't have the discretion not to do it that way. And so thank you for, I, I meant to say that and you're exactly right. That, that is not a general fund, uh, source of revenue.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'll move on to the next point, um, which is constitutional, uh, state shared revenue. And this is, uh, frankly, the one that is the biggest unknown for us and the most concerning for us. Um, as we prepared the, uh, budget back in March and April, uh, we knew that at some point, uh, these numbers were not going to materialize. And now this is a general fund source of revenue. And so this goes into our discretionary account. Um, it's, it's not, you know, all of our general fund revenue is just one, one source of it. But, uh, we really expected that this would be the greatest, uh, hit area of our budget because it's sales tax affiliated. And so obviously through a shutdown, uh, those numbers are going to dwindle pretty quickly. And so I'm going to start reading some numbers again and I'll summarize here at the end. Our, our last, wow. In our last estimate prior to COVID nineteen, uh, the state had estimated for us that we should receive one million nine hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars from this revenue source for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So that's a little over one point nine million dollars. And we did not receive an updated estimate at the time we were doing our budget. And as you'll recall, we are required to adopt a budget, uh, the first half of May. And so we revised that down ourselves. And so we revised that down ourselves to $1,795,800, really not knowing exactly what the impact would be, but we thought that somewhere in that range would be in the ballpark at least. After the state had a revenue estimating conference back in May, they have since provided us with an updated estimate on this. And so this is our constitutional shared revenue. They are now projecting, and this is taking the COVID impact into account, that our new estimate is $1,629,656. And so this is down $166,144 from what we budgeted for. And it's also, it also represents a 15% decrease from the first estimate we got, which was pre-COVID. And so this is the area that we thought would be the most impacted. It is the most impacted right now. But honestly, Nathan Owen and I were together when we got this news, and we kind of breathed a little bit of a sigh of relief because it frankly could have been a whole lot worse. This number right now is manageable for us to budget around. Well, obviously, we never budget the full amount, so as we work on budget amendments, we're going to come up with something that goes less than what that estimate is by, by some margin we feel is safe. But this is certainly the one that that has been impacted the most. And so before I move on to some good news to follow up the bad news, I'll see if there are any questions or comments on that. And Nathan Owen, if you're here, if I'm leaving anything out, don't hesitate to, to jump in as well.
So Nathan, will that, will we keep getting updated? Will that keep, like, how many times are we get, when are we going to finally know? I guess is what I'm asking, what that amount is going to be?
Yeah, we're going to know when real, real tax receipts start coming in. And so unlike transportation funding, we receive these payments every two months. And so we'll start getting those payments in, and we can look to see, is it trending the way that the state had estimated that it would trend? And so we'll know pretty early on. The state indicated that they were going to do another revenue estimating conference in August. And so the thing, the same thing they did in May, they'll do again in August, which thankfully is not that far out. And then they will take into account everything they know up to that point and provide us with another estimate that would help us to plan for the rest of the fiscal year. And so we'll get another official estimate from them probably in August. But we also have to keep, keep track of, of real-time dollars as they come in every other month. It's a plan around. And so the state feels pretty confident about these estimates. Like I said, they've got a lot of different experts working on it. As we're reopening now, we feel a little bit more comfortable. It got more and more stressful the longer the shutdown occurred, because obviously that directly relates to this revenue source. But there's also a threat of additional shutdowns in the future, and we don't know exactly what's going to happen. So this is the one that we'll probably have to keep our eye on the closest and the one that we're going to have to plan around. But again, we were bracing for a number that was potentially even worse than the one we got. So we don't feel like this is a huge defeat, and, and I'll follow up with my next item with why we think this is the number for us. Any other question? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I have one, another one. So, so correct me if I'm wrong, but, and we, we've all read the newspaper and have had concerned citizens stop us at one point or another related to our revenue and things. There's no need for us to prepare to, to cut 20% of workforce or anything extreme like that at this point in time because we're, we're not going to have this, this huge unexpected swing down or, or, or huge revenue shortfall that, that other, you know, education, for example, is, is absolutely getting crushed. There's no indication that we're going to be crushed in that manner. Is that accurate?
As of now, that, that is accurate, and I'm glad that you, you pointed that out because there's a couple of things I'd like to say in relation to that. Look, looking at our budget right now, you know, you, you hear about entities facing multimillion-dollar deficits. The deficit we're facing right now is that number that I just shared with you, about $166,000, and that's based on that latest estimate. I also want to be clear that that 15% cut, that's just on this one source of revenue. We have other sources of revenues that are not bracing for a 15% cut and that we feel confident will materialize as planned. Unlike any other year, the city's going to have to watch this month to month, obviously. But when you look at, there, there's been a lot of apples and oranges comparisons when people talk about our budget. And when you look at the cities that are taking drastic measures, it's because their budget has been significantly more impacted than ours. You know, if you try to compare us to Detroit, you need to understand that we don't collect income taxes, and they do. Income taxes plummeted immediately. We also don't collect casino taxes, and they do, and casino taxes plummeted immediately. And so our sources of revenue are a little different than that, and, and we're a little bit better positioned to absorb challenges like this, at least initially. And so, yeah, we, we are, you know, we know that we're dealing with some difficult financial times, but we would not describe this, at least with what we know right now, as an actual crisis for us. We are down 50 employees fewer than we were nine years ago. We don't want to cut back on our workforce unless we absolutely have to. The prior conversation outlined that we don't need less staff, we need more staff in certain areas, but we're trying to be cautious about that, and that's why we've removed all new staff from our budget projection. But yeah, you're exactly right, Commissioner Watson. We're, we're not in a situation where we're facing a multimillion-dollar shortfall, at least not yet. And we certainly hope and pray that that doesn't develop throughout the course of the year.
Thank you.
So the last item I wanted to hit on tonight is, is really good news. And this is another piece of state-provided revenue called the local community stabilization share. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail as to what that is, other than to say that back in 2014, the state phased out some personal property tax collection, and they replaced it with a use tax. And so now we receive this payment from them manually to make up for that lost revenue from, from back in, in legislation that passed earlier this decade. And so in our, this relates to our current year budget, 1920, our current fiscal year. We had budgeted, we had expected to receive $630,000 over the course of the whole fiscal year in, in terms of local community stabilization funding. So we got our last payment here in May, and we actually collected $1,053,61. And so that is an increase of $423,000 more than we expected to collect from this revenue source. And so this is also a general fund piece of revenue, and these, these revenues go to general fund expenditures. And so a few minutes ago, you heard me talk about a line item that is down $166,000. But in the same section of the budget, we have a line item that has now collected $423,000 more than we were anticipating collecting this year. And so what we'll do is put that money into our general fund. It'll become part of our fund balance, also known as prior year's revenue when we're planning our budgets. And it is going to be extremely helpful for that topic. And so this is a good thing. This is, again, excess funds. What we'd like to recommend is that we use these extra $423,000 to fill shortfalls that we know about in the current budget, also to help absorb some of the reductions in this current year of funding, which also have not been quite as severe as we were planning on. But this is good news. This is a good thing, and we're very thankful for this. What I'd like to do as far as the next step, and Nathan Owen is, is on the call as well. We're getting close to the end of our fiscal year for 1920. Now, this is an important time in the finance department where all the books get reconciled, and we can, you know, close the book on one fiscal year and move on to the next. And so we'd like to get another week or two down the road and then take these numbers that I've shared and take the information that we know and put it into some sort of an amendment that will put our budget for 2021 around these new estimates. But we're feeling pretty good about where we're at. Doesn't mean that we're wanting to necessarily change our course. We're not projecting to put those capital projects back in. We're not projecting, we're not requesting this to add staff. We think that, I don't think that would be super wise at this point. But our mantra when COVID hit was that we'd do the best we can to hold steady, meaning that we would hopefully not have to lose staff, hopefully be able to complete the projects that were underway and not have to go back on those. Hopefully, instead of buy new equipment, extend the life of the equipment another year or two if we can. So we still want to do all those things. But our situation is not nearly as dire as, as it could have been, at least as I sit here today on, on June 15th. And so it'll take a lot of vigilance to keep watching it, but we're going to try to have something for your consideration on July 6th. I can't promise that we'll be ready with an amendment at that time. But I know that I would like to leave knowing that at least at that point, the budget is, is centered around these estimates, these new estimates that we have, which, again, it's more good news than bad. So I'll take any other questions you have on this. That was the entirety of my update tonight. Obviously, there are other sources of revenue that we're keeping an eye on, but it was the state funding that we did not really have much to go on back when we had to adopt a budget, and now we've got numbers to put in. So I'll take any questions you have or any comments. And I'll put, also document this for you in written form so that you have something to reference moving forward. And Mayor, if there's, if there are no comments, certainly we can move on to item four if you're comfortable with that as well.
Yes, let's move on. That sounds great.
Tamaris, can you, are you going to take the lead on this one? Tamaris?
Sorry, guys. It's not just you, Commissioner Stair. Just want to bring you guys up to date on the charter amendment that we've been working on since the vacancy came up on the commission last year. As you know, we had gotten the language approved earlier this year from the governor's office, and then we made the decision that you would like to hold off until the August election to have that be on the ballot. So we got the language approved the second time. The ballots have been printed, and we are now seeing that applications are going out for absentee ballots and will be, absentee ballots will be going out to voters around the end of this month. They've not been received in by the clerk's office yet, but they are expected soon, and they'll be getting mailed out to voters. So this language is going to be on the August 4th ballot. And if the language passes, then we will have a new procedure for filling a vacancy on the commission or if we were to need to fill a vacancy for a mayor. The language is specifically going to say, "It is proposed that upon the occurrence of a vacancy in the office of mayor or city commissioner, and for any current vacancy in those offices, that the city commission shall either, one, call a special election to fill the vacancy for the balance of the unexpired term, or, two, appoint an eligible person to hold the position until the next regular city election, at which election the position shall be filled for the balance, if any, of the unexpired term. Shall the proposed amendment be adopted?" So a yes vote would allow that amendment to be adopted. If we had enough yes votes, and a no vote would vote against it. Over the next couple of weeks, I will be reaching out to Spencer as well as the local radio stations, see if we can have some conversation about this so they can help us with making sure that the public understands what it is that we're asking them to vote on. And I'll also be providing everything to Michelle so that it can be put on our website and our Facebook page so that residents can find it there. But I just wanted to remind everyone that we've finally reached the finish line on this, and it will be coming out on the ballot. It's well positioned on the ballot, so it's not going to be something that it's hard for people to see, it shouldn't be missed. So once that election is over on August 4th and we find out whether or not the proposal has passed, the last step will be for a certified election to be sent to Secretary of State. That does have to go to them within 30 days, but there's no specification that says that we have to wait a certain number of days for the law to take effect. So as soon as that has gone to the Secretary of State, then as a commission, assuming that the proposal passes, then you will be in a position to start making your plans to fill your empty seat, and you should be able to do that sometime in September.
Any questions? That's all I got?
Thank you, Tamaris. Item five is other items as time permits. I know we're running late into this meeting. There are just two quick things I want to mention for any, any residents who are listening. One is that City Hall is open for appointments right now. And so if you need to get in the building to meet with a staff member, you're able to do that. We just asked that you plan that out in advance. We're planning to unlock the doors very soon. We've had some conversations just today about when we can unlock the doors. We've made some changes in the building. We've moved some seating around. We've put up some hand sanitizer stations. We've put plexiglass up in different places. And so we're getting close to where we think it'll be safe to, to unlock the doors. But in the meantime, we certainly want to encourage anybody that if they'd like to come here to meet with someone or to conduct some level of business with us, that that's allowable. Just reach out to us first so that we can pencil that in for an appointment. A second thing I want to mention is, this is our last meeting for June, but on June 26th, the city is hosting an outdoor movie night with the Crowswell, and we're pretty excited about this. This commission has talked recently about trying to come up with things that get people outside in safer environments. And so this is going to be an outdoor movie, a drive-in movie at Heritage Park. It's going to start at dusk. The movie is Sonic the Hedgehog, which I'm, I hear is a hit with families. And so be looking out for more information on that. We would love to have a good turnout for that, and we think it'll be a nice time to engage with some people in the community while still practicing social distancing and, and taking all the necessary precautionary measures. So that'll be on June 26th, and I'll be on the lookout for our social media, website, email, different things like that for more information coming soon on that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Anybody else from the commission that has anything else? All right, we're going to open it up now for public comment.
I have a question for Mr. Elliott. Is there any way that I can meet with you tomorrow sometime?
That's possible.
Okay, what's the best way to get ahold of you?
Well, email or, or my phone here at City Hall.
Okay, because I need to get with you about the tent size and all that behind our building.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All righty, thank you.
Not hearing any more public comments. I'm going, I'm, I can entertain a motion.
Hello, hello, can I talk? Okay, Kent, O'Carroll's 110 Locust. So we've got all these budget projections. I guess the one thing that I always bring up is the pension deficit. Do we know that we're going to be able to be at 60% of budget? And do we know what our, what our, what the pension did during the, during the crisis? Are we down? Is there going to be a deficit there? So I was wondering if Mr. Byrd could update everybody on that.
Mayor, is it okay to address that?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so we usually get our actuarial reports in May. We have not received it yet for our latest update. I'm guessing that's a COVID-related delay, but we would expect it literally any day now. The thing to keep in mind with our actuarial reports, which determines our funded percentages, is that they only go through December 31st of the previous year. And so the report that we get, hopefully any day, will run through that timeframe. It will not include anything that relates from January to now. And so we won't get that report until December 31st later this year. And so when we get the actuarial report, we will obviously be sharing that publicly and with the commission. It'll have where we're at through December, but we should probably brace ourselves that the, the impact from COVID would show up at the next report, which would, which would be for next year. So as soon as we have the report, we'll make it available for everyone to take a look at.
All right. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene for our regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
It is now seven o'clock. Nathan, would you, are you on, are you ready to go to give the, talk about our Zoom meeting?
Yes, definitely. I know nobody would want to miss that. So once again, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to address just a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. For much of the meeting, we asked that participants, other than commissioners and staff, mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussion free of a lot of the background noise that sometimes can be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be provided at different points throughout the meeting. And at those times, participants can certainly unmute themselves to have the opportunity to address the commission. The three-minute rule does concede to be in effect for the public comment period at the end of the meeting. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, all, the format and structure of the meeting will be the exact same as it is in person. And we will work through our agenda items as usual. All of the commission rules and procedures do remain in effect. Talked a lot about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. These cases have increased in recent weeks. And if this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect to the meeting via the same link they used to get here in the first place. So if that happens, just give it a few minutes, come back and hopefully that'll solve the problem. We will also turn over the meeting to law enforcement, should it be interrupted in that way. And we certainly hope that we can get through another meeting without this happening. So our agenda is going to be displayed on the screen tonight for anybody who wants to follow along. You can also get our full agenda packet on our website, adriancity.com. If you'd like to see all the same information that the commission receives, it's there. And there is a closed captioning bar at the bottom of the screen for anybody who may like to utilize that also. So thank you for participating in our meeting tonight. Mayor Heath, I will turn this meeting over to you.
All right. I call to order the June 15th, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Robin, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hill. Mr. Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts. Mr. Strayer. Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 1st, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move.
Four.
I, who did that support, was that?
Mary.
Yeah, it was Brad Watson.
Thank you. I couldn't hear it, sorry. I have a motion from Commissioner Hill with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2020 special meeting of the Adrian City Commission? So moved. Who are you giving it to, Robin?
Well, in the minutes, the minutes, I actually have to reflect both because they did both speak at the same time. But I'm not sure who got that one. Who wants it?
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move to pay the vouchers as presented.
Four.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
I now, before we move into the regular agenda, I do have a proclamation. It is, and it is in regards to Juneteenth, which is coming up here this week. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and a half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. Now therefore, I, Mayor Angela Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth in Adrian, Michigan, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of the celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. Moving on to the regular agenda. Resolution R 20-104 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Emily Rebar to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
To say that I've known Emily for a long time. I think she'll do a really good job. And I like the, the opportunity for a young person in their twenties to be on that board.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-015 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint D'Angelo Boone to the Human Resource, the Human Relations Commission. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to approve the resolution.
Support.
Who are you giving that second to?
Brad Watson, he was louder, sorry, Mary.
Okay, thanks. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-106 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to appoint Christopher Carter to the Human Relations Commission. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
I have a brief one. Mr. Carter was, I'm involved with the Boys and Girls Club and he's, he's a, he's a club kid. So it's a little bit extra exciting for me to see him rising and to be a community pillar. And I fully support his appointment to the Human Relations Committee.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss. I do believe the second was from Commissioner Hill, is that correct, Robin?
Yeah, it was.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-107 is from Finance. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and purchase an email server from IT Right. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adapt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
I just have a, I just want some clarity and I'm not sure if Nathan, you can provide it or not. There was the, the wave with the bid process. Can you just walk us through? I'm not totally clear on the confidentiality and the security considerations related to this. It's to me, unskilled or uninformed might, might ring true here that, that I think a server is a commodity, especially a virtual one. So why, why do we not want to bid this out?
Well, I'll, hey Nathan Owen, if you're here, you're on deck. I'm going to start and you can finish this one. I want to give you just a little background on this topic. We had budgeted $22,000 for sort of a traditional onsite server. And over the last few months, as IT and Finance has looked into this, we found that the cloud versions have drastically reduced in price from where they used to be. And so we're going to save about $11,000 going this route. Primarily it's security concerns, just related with the sensitive information that's housed on a server. That and the fact that we are barely above the amount that requires bidding anyway. We felt like it would be a, you know, we don't request this very often, but we thought to give security concerns and the price, we would, we would approach you with this. Uh, we would, we would approach you with this this time. And other Nathan, if you're there, uh, do you want to supplement that with some additional information from the department?
Sure. Um, yeah, to echo what you were saying, uh, the security concerns. IT Right is our current consultant as well. So they are familiar with our systems and, and the security, things that go, go along with that. So that was, that was part of it too.
Hearing no more Commissioner comments, I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gaus. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Sorry, I lost my place. Give me a sec. There we go. Okay. Resolution R 20-108 is from the Fire Department. It is a resolution to approve the fireworks display permit for the Christian Family Center for August 1st, 2020, with a rain date of August 2nd, 2020. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-109 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and accept the quote from Future Energy for one dual charging station. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Before we go to public comment, Nathan Bird, will you please explain where the money is coming from for this dual charging station and why we're waiving the bid process?
Yeah, definitely. And I appreciate the chance to do that. I know that anytime we're spending money right now, it comes along with additional scrutiny and that's a good thing. So I wanted to just talk real briefly about this. I believe we last talked about this as a group. I want to say it was back in January during one of our DDA updates at a pre-meeting and we had, uh, sort of agreed at that time that this would be something that we thought would be good for downtown um, and something that we've been pursuing ever since. Matt's done a lot of work with this, uh, with DDA members to, uh, get us up to this point. And so, uh, this is not a general fund expenditure. This is coming from the auto parking fund. Um, you may be aware that each year the city, the DDA, and also individual downtown owners uh, pay into an auto fund account. And those funds are to be used for anything related to our parking lots. Repainting, repaving, maintenance, improvements of any kind. And so this is going to be a parking spot for electric vehicles where they can go and recharge. And so it's an eligible use for these funds. And so the funds for, uh, 1920 have already been collected and the, it plan is to use those funds to provide this. The total cost is just over 14,000, but Consumers Energy, um, has offered us a grant, uh, for 5,000. So it takes it down to just over 9,000 that we'll be paying out of the auto fund. Um, and so that's a good thing. We're not positive that'll be available in the future, but we know it's available for us now. And so, um, that's why we're looking to, uh, to go ahead and finalize this before the fiscal year ends here in a few weeks. Uh, but I want to be clear that the money that's in the auto parking fund can't be reallocated to something else. So you can't put it towards anything general fund related or any other task. It has to be used for parking lot purposes. And we have a safe funding amount that, uh, spending this, this amount of money shouldn't harm that account at all. Um, the reason we're waiving the bidding process is that this has already been bid through a purchasing consortium called Sourcewell. And so, um, it has gone through a national bidding process. We're just asking to waive our own local bidding process. Matt, if there's anything you want to add to that, I, I think I covered it, but, um, this has been bid just through a different format and we didn't see the need to repeat that. Given the sort of unique nature of this service. Matt, anything else you want to add?
No, I think you touched off on it all.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask if there is any public comment? Are there any Commissioner comments? So I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-110 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for the purchase of chip and fog seal for various city streets. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Matt.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gaus.
First of all, um, this low bidder, Henry W. Bergman, has the city done business with this company before?
Yes, they actually performed our last, uh, chip and fog seal about two years ago now.
Okay. The reason I ask, I'm always concerned when there's that much of a disparity between low and high. They're very low in comparison to the other two. So, um, like I said, I'm usually concerned about that. You're comfortable that, this company can do what we're going to ask them to do for that price?
Yes, yes, yes. We actually talked to the contractor, um, shortly after we, uh, we received the bids. They were, um, quite shocked too, actually, that they were, uh, that much slower. But I, I reviewed the contract with them and they feel like they can, uh, perform the work necessary.
Thank you.
I, I would like to say, um, that they're, being that they were so low, we would look to add a couple more streets, um, into that list, uh, if possible. And I believe, uh, um, Nathan will be sending you a revised list, um, probably in a couple of days.
Yeah. Okay, sir.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Hell with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-111 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve the Adrian to Comsey LDFA Smart Zone Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Budget. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Moved to adapt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? One thing I would like, Nathan, uh, just to reiterate, this is not anything that we are putting any money into. We are literally just adopting the LDFA Smart Zone budget, correct? It's not any money that is coming out of us at all.
Uh, correct, yeah. The Smart Zone is, is, uh, the, the funds are handled through the board, which is joint Adrian and Tecumseh members. And so this is an annual process where they recommend a budget, but it does require the approval of uh, both our commission and their commission. And so, um, there, there's no, uh, city funds being dedicated to this. They have tax, tax capture that they rely on for their activities and that is separate from, from our revenue. So, uh, you're correct on that. There's no city funding of this. It's just done through the, uh, LDFA board.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-112 is from the City Clerk. It is a resolution to approve the renewal of the Medical Marijuana Facility Permit Application, RM 20-009 for Oasis Wellness Center of Adrian LLC. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
I'd just like to point out to the commission that this resolution, along with the, the next one on the agenda, are connected. And this resolution is for the renewal of the permit for Oasis, which has had a permit since 2018 when we began our permit process. But once they filed for their renewal, they also in turn filed for a transfer of their permit as they are, um, no longer wanting to open a facility here in Adrian and they had already set up um, a new company to transfer that to. So the first resolution, if approved by you, will approve both the renewal and the transfer. All that language is in the resolution. And so the next resolution on the agenda would be for approval of permits for the company that they're transferring to. So if for any reason the commission were to, um, not approve R 20-112, then we would ask that your next step would be to strike the next resolution on the agenda. If you do approve this one, then they can both move forward.
Any other public comment? Are there any Commissioner comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Watson.
Uh, Attorney Henigan, what, under what conditions, can you refresh our memory? Can, can somebody transfer their permit and why this wouldn't just go back into the pool? For the, for somebody else to apply for it? Just, just clear us up on our marijuana rules, please.
Yes, I will. Um, they are allowed to transfer. If they have a valid permit, they are allowed to request a transfer to a new entity. It would be some type of business deal that they've already worked out, whether they're selling their business and want it to go to a new owner or they're selling the personal property. In this case, they have sold the building and everything to a new owner and they have a right to transfer that permit. They have, the new individuals have to go through the full process. They also pay an application fee, just as if it were a new application. But transfers can take place anytime throughout the year. They just have to, um, make that request in writing to the clerk and then go through all the steps of the application process, um, for the new owner. And then it has to go before the commission for approval for that to transfer. So simply because the permit is theirs and they own it, um, similar to those who have like, say, a taxi cab company in New York City and they have a, a taxi driver permit, they can transfer that to another individual who wants to be a taxi driver.
We have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Gaus. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Is that mute?
Yep.
Sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-113 is from the City Clerk. It is a resolution to approve a commercial marijuana facilities permit application, MM 20-009 for an adult use permit for Quality Roots Incorporated. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Apply for adult use.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hell with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-114 is from the City Clerk. It is a resolution to approve a medical marijuana facility permit application, RM 20-013 for WGL Industries LLC. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-115 is from the City Commission. Is a resolution to, sorry, is a resolution to appoint Gregory Elliott as interim city administrator, community development director. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gaus with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
There are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Do you have any comments on these reports, Commissioner? We will now move into public comment time. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no public comment, I'm going to move into Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioner comments?
I have one member.
Commissioner Hell.
I apologize for not saying this when, uh, R 20-115, a resolution to appoint Greg Elliott. I wanted to say thank you to the two internal candidates that also threw their hat in the ring, um, being on that committee. Um, I think it shows what kind of state city hall is at, where we had three internal candidates that were interested in the job. Um, all, all three are qualified and, and I just wanted to say I appreciate those two staff, particular staff that were still in the hat. Um, all, all three are qualified and, and I just wanted to say I appreciate those two staff, particular staff that were still in the hat.
Hearing no more Commissioner comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.